Good morning, everybody. It's January 7th. It is 11:01 a.m. I'm Werner Tepe. I'm calling to order the Special Public Service Committee meeting. May we have a roll call?
Brown.
Brown here.
Leonard.
Leonard here.
Lewis.
Lewis here.
Shepro.
Shepro here.
Serge's.
Serge is present.
Kope.
Kope is present.
Tepe.
Tepe here. We're going to skip the approval of minutes. We'll do that in our regular meeting. Are there any, is there anybody here who wants to make public comments or anybody online? That's good. We're going fast. So we'll go to the one key item of business, which is the precinct boundary adjustment. And perhaps the best way to do that is, is Mr. Finstock has a, has a presentation as he's prepared and between Finstock and myself, we can probably get this to happen.
Mr. Chairman, Shepro, question?
Mr. Shepro.
Yeah, when you say between you and Roger, you're going to make this happen, are you referring to the PowerPoint? Or the precinct boundary adjustment?
The PowerPoint. We don't have that much power, Mr. Shepro.
Well.
Sorry to give you the impression that we get.
We may get to that later in the meeting.
All right. So this, this is Roger Fonstock from the IT department. You should have the first slide, which is a county seal on your screen. If you don't see that, let me know. Somebody see that? Okay. So what we've been working on is-
This is Tom Kope. Is that the January 4th, 22 presentation?
There was a January 7th presentation sent out first thing this morning from Jane Talish, and I also sent a copy out.
What's the difference between that and the 4th? I'm on the 4th. Can I work with this?
Just-
There are some additional notes at the end.
Updates on the progress, updates on the work that's been, what we've been working on, things for the past week. So it's just kind of a updated calendar or schedule.
Thank you.
Okay. So this is from the Public Service Committee. Chairman Vern Tepe asked me to work with him on putting some of this together. And like you said, we'll share some of the slides with you and show you what we've been working on. This is about the county precinct alignment. Commonly look at splits and merges, but alignment is the alignment of the current precinct lines with the jurisdictional boundaries of certain districts, county board districts, the legislative districts, Illinois representative senate, U.S. Congressional. So trying to align the precinct boundaries that we have with those districts so that a precinct only represents one of those districts at a time. So we try to eliminate the splits of the jurisdictions. The splits and merges is once you've done the alignment, trying to split precincts that are over a certain size. So the statute that was approved was 1,200 registered voters, not population, registered voters within a precinct. So we're trying to work with that. And then we also have what is considered a merge, which is something that is, you know, too small or not something that we would like to try to retain in the future. This is a chance for us to make the adjustment and merge really small precincts. Generally, that's under 500 voting population into some neighboring precincts. So that's, that's kind of the ballpark of it. The details of it are a lot more specific. So this is the adopted final map for the county board districts. I put that in there because a lot of the board members obviously think, you know, about their districts. And it does involve their districts as far as the precinct boundaries and alignment and the splits of the precincts, but it also involves those other jurisdictional boundaries that we're trying to get through. So this was what was provided by the state's attorney's office. This came, at one point, we were trying to look at what is required under statute. And I underlined, you know, kind of the language that was in there. This is a cut and paste from, I think they were using, I think it was Don Truist provided or Caitlin Vargas to attribute. But the precinct is situated within a single congressional legislative representative district within municipal ward, and then also the county board. Don had made a point to make sure we mentioned that the county board needs to be within a single precinct or not with the board. The board district doesn't need to be within a single precinct. The precinct needs to represent a single board district. So that was kind of-
Can I ask you a question at this point? Shepro?
Sure. It's going to be handled later. We'll, we'll defer it.
Well, okay, so for over a dozen years, we have been told that the insofar as is practicable means we don't have to do anything because it's never, it's never practicable. And now we're being asked to do this in a week and told that we have to do it. I mean, it seems to me that we ought to be underlining the practicable part of this. And question why it is that we haven't done anything for, you know, almost 20 years, and now we're trying to do it all in a week? I just am very concerned about, about that. And insofar as practicable at a minimum would seem to offer flexibility and not say that it has to be done that way. And that's really not a question for you, Roger. It's a question for the state's attorney.
I can only speak to what we were advised, which was we need to basically take all the statutory responsibilities that are defined in there, and we need to be working on them to the effect that we can get them done.
This, the portion that's on here, 511-1.
Yes.
I believe is not new. I believe that was the existing statute. And I guess I'm wondering
That's the new part.
The, the amendment related specifically to this election cycle. But I guess I'm back to if this required this to be done, why is it that we are just being told that now at the 11th hour and not last summer, last year, five years ago, 10 years ago? And that's really a question for the state's attorney's office, but I think it's an important question. Because even if this gets done, and we're, you're going to tell us about it, I presume, there's going to be obviously no meaningful opportunity for any board member or the public to look at what's being proposed and have any serious input into it. Thank you for listening.
So Mr. Shepro, this is Jamie Mossar. The issue that we're looking at is the 5/11-2, which, as you know, became effective on November 15th of 2021. So that's not something we would have known about last summer or when we were starting. And that specifically puts in the 60-day time requirement. The issue that we're having is that obviously because of the pandemic, there was a delay in census data. As a result of that, we worked very hard amongst the board members with IT, with everyone to try to get our county board redistricting done. And now we're in a situation where we are following the law in the best possible way we can.
Okay, please proceed, Roger.
Thank you. This is Roger Fonstock again. So I skipped over slide two, which State's Attorney Mossar just mentioned. This is 11-2, which this, the pertinent part of this is dividing the election precincts as practicable to 1,200 registered voters. Again, registered voters, not talking about population. So we need to be at 1,200 registered voters. And then it continues. And this is the second part that Ms. Mossar mentioned, which is the 60 days after the effective date, which I believe is January 15th. January 14th, I think, is the Friday. So so that's the, the timing of this. And also looking at, you know, the requirements, we went and were asked to look at what the scope of work would be from the state's attorney, from Chairman Tepe, from Madam Chair Corinne Pierog. We've also talked with Clerk Jack Cunningham. So a large audience of different players involved with this, GIS and IT included. So those are the conversations that we were having is what is practicable, what can be done? And the direction was to write up the statement of work, write up the work schedule of what you could do. And we did it in parts. And I'll talk about that. I mean, this is, I just talked about this slide a little bit, but these are the people that we were consulting with and who we were working with. And there was a determination that Public Service Committee was the proper place, and these were the proper people to work on this. And the objective was simply to comply with the statute. There was no other objective defined, really. Reconciling the precinct lines were the main objective. Splitting precincts larger than 1,200 were kind of a secondary goal and merging smaller precincts into larger ones to limit the, you know, the volume of precincts. If we just simply split and don't consider the really small precincts and population, we end up probably duplicating or adding more precincts. We'll have, you know, a lot more than, than we have now, which I think you're going to be happy to see what Mr. Tepe can-
Actually, actually, we will have about the same number of precincts as we have now.
That's good. That was the approach. I divided it into three parts, and that was mainly because of the time constraints. And I could have updated some of these because we've actually made quite a bit of progress on these. The first one was to import all of our jurisdictional boundaries that were enacted and approved. You have to remember the state legislature and the governor were working on signing and getting these approved or enacted. And there's also some litigation about these. So whether they're enacted or official or not, our understanding is that they're enacted and that they're the correct maps. We, we sourced this from both the Illinois Legislative site, their site, the Illinois State Board of Elections site. We got a copy of their shape files as well. And then we sourced our own, which we were looking at. So we're very confident that these are the correct boundary maps that were needed. And I would say the State Board of Elections maps are the ones that we're using. So the import of those were joined with voter registration data. So we can see the districts' shapes. And we can actually see the parcel identifier or the location of a registered voter. And we can tell you how many, we can count them up and tell you how many are in a precinct. And we can tell you, you know, basically where they're at, which gives us a kind of the geospatial or the location on a map where you're at in a precinct, in a district, which is what's required in order to split. So we're looking at all the alignment and how that, that comes to be lining up these districts. Determining which ones are candidates for splits, which ones are just line redraws or correcting lines to make them contiguous with the precincts. So we have the board districts. The precinct needs to be lined up with the board districts' lines. We can't split this precinct between two board districts ideally. And again, that goes back to the where practicable. So once we do the import and we start splitting and we, we start alignment, we looked at precincts over 3,000 voters, which would need to be brought down to 1,200. I think there was only four that we were looking at initially. Then we were talking about over 2,000, and that was, you know, another group that brought us up even higher and then ultimately getting everybody under 1,200. And Mr. Tepe, I don't know if you have a kind of follow-up on that. How many you actually were working with in total in the-
The, the actual number I don't recall, but I know that we, the, the group that was working on it was able to handle splitting of, of all of the districts that were over 1,500 or maybe 1,400. At one point in time, we just reached a point where it just wasn't practicable.
Yeah. Yeah, we have a lot of them that hover around that number. So, you know, that's a good question.
Question, Shepro?
Yes, sir.
The chair just said that it wasn't practicable, but I thought the state's attorney have just told us that practicable doesn't matter anymore because we had to do it within 60 days. And I thought we were told the other day that, and actually earlier in the meeting, that we were doing all of them, but this slide seems to repeatedly say if time allows. And it doesn't appear, at least here, that we've even identified what all new precincts would be required because we haven't gotten there yet. Is that correct?
Mr. Shepro, I think you're confusing two different issues. Part of what we have to do within the 60-day time period is move the boundaries so that you don't have a precinct that's in two different board districts or legislative or congressional. That's what we have to do within the 60-day time period. It allows us to go into the June meeting to really then address any precinct that is not around that 1,200 registered voter, voters. Now they're doing that now as well, as much as possible.
Can we go back to the slide that was, was being shown?
So this, this slide, part one, is where we're talking about aligning the precinct boundaries with the districts. We have done those. Those are in a test environment. They've not been done.
Well, then can we go back to the part two slide that I asked the question about?
Absolutely. So this is where we get into the discussion about splitting. And we did it this way, Mr. Shepro, in order to have cutoff points based on our time constraints was, you know, if, if we can get all the ones split that are over 3,000, that's great because those are the most complicated. You know, and also the, the most grossly overpopulated, right? And if we can get to 2,000 and over, that's great. We're moving faster. We realized we were moving a lot faster than we anticipated thanks to a lot of talented people. And now we're down to what would we do if it was over 1,200? And that's where we're at right now.
What I don't understand is why does the 60 days apply only to part one and not to this part?
Does?
Because that's just the way the law was drafted. Because it allows us to do it in a special June meeting, and that's what has always been done. What they're trying to do is make sure that we're not doing giant boundary shifts in the middle of each year. It's supposed to be done after we have the census.
I believe, thank you, thank you. I don't have the state law, but I believe that on decennial is the only time that we can readjust precincts to merge them. So that is a once every 10 years. Whether or not it's practical or not, doable or not, it allows us at this juncture to be able to merge smaller precincts to align them to that 1,200 population goal.
My understanding is what you have said, Madam Chair, is how some people haven't interpreted the law, but I don't believe any statute actually says that as far as consolidating.
Mr. Chairman, the, Mr. Shepro, the one thing I didn't talk to our staff about, which I thought helped was, you know, if all the precincts were less than 1,200, we would still have to align all the boundaries to have the precincts represent one district. So that, that part is the part that we focused on in part one, and that was our primary focus to be done by the, the deadline. And then these part two were secondary to that. And it, and it was discussed as how far can we get to reconcile or deal with all the splits? So that, that was kind of the order priority for us.
Okay, well, I'll shut up for the time being.
Kope, please, if you don't mind.
Kope?
Yes, Mr. Kope.
Hi, thank you. So part one is the, is correcting the, the boundaries within the congressional legislative district and the, and the county board district. Is that, is that, is that correct? And then part two, we're not, the question keeps arising. What is the timeframe for part two? So if we can, if we can conduct business to satisfy part one, what is our timeframe for part two? And does, does part two fall under the practicable interpretation?
This is Chair Tepe here. Based upon the work that's been accomplished through yesterday and this morning, I think we will be able to complete almost all of part two and have detailed maps distributed by Tuesday of next week. That's just how well this entire group has worked together.
Thank you, Mr. Tepe. But I have one more question, though. Would the, what would the real timeframe be for part two? I think that's what is being alluded to. What is, what is our part two? Yes, we want to, we want to conduct our business. We want to create a, a, a final result. But there, if, if, if questions are, are, are concernating, what is our real timeframe for two?
Real time frame is it will primarily be done by Tuesday. And we'll have reports available to you by Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
All of that, all of that work, and believe me, there's nobody more impressed by this than me, the way everybody has worked together. And we'll get to some comments on that at the end of this presentation.
Well, I certainly, I'm certainly willing to work, and I thank you for that explanation. But, you know, I just, I guess I'm devil's advocate. I don't know. Not that Mr. Shepro is the devil.
I, I think, I think what you're having is you're, you're having a problem believing that all of this amount of work got accomplished, and I join you in that. The only difference is I was there while they were getting it accomplished. So I've seen how much work has been done. It's just very impressive.
All right, thank you.
Roger Fonstock again. So from part two, we are actually finishing up the third and fourth bullet points right now. That's where we're at. We're in the final, you know, split merge of the, the districts that are, you know, above 1,200 and the smallest ones. Actually, I think they're done with the smallest ones. All the small ones are done. They made their last.
They probably are.
Yeah, they may, actually, they made it right after you walked out of the room. They're like, we're done. We're not doing those. They're, they're large enough. So then you move into the third part. This is where we are doing some work between IT and GIS and elections. There has to be export-import process from the map work that we're doing in GIS into DFM Associates software, which is called Election Information Management Systems. It's an acronym EIMS. So if you hear that, that's what they're talking about. The EIMS system, right now, there's, there's some manual processes that we have done in elections to do minor updates, minor changes, minor adjustments, voter registration changes. We cannot do the mass changes that are required manually. There's just no way we would be able to get that done. That was one of our early concerns about having the time to do this. So we contacted DFM and our election staff, IT and GIS. We think we have the necessary automation scripts and jobs to move the data between the two sources. Our DBAs or database administrators are very comfortable with it. They think that it looks very good. And in fact, it's been done in other jurisdictions, and we've even used these scripts before. But the last time we did it was when we converted to the system, and it was almost 15 years ago, I think. So we'll be using those scripts to export voter registration data and the codes associated with, you know, voters. So you get a, you get a code or coding based on where you live, what parcel you're on, and what voting districts you're in, or what jurisdictions you're in. We need to take that over to GIS, pull the voters in by your parcel or by your location, and then we have to re-code you, export you back out with the codes, and bring it back into the election registration system. You have to do that for about 318,000 people. So the good news was that the export from elections, and I can say this with confidence, was incredibly accurate. We found very few artifacts or issues. A couple of things that we had to clean up. I think it was less than, less than 24 things that we thought we had to deal with, and they were all identified and easily identified. So that was good. So congratulations to the election staff. They run a really clean, clean set of data, to be honest. I mean, that's good. I was a little worried that we might, you know, have to do more cleanup. 24 out of 300,000 sounds good. Quality control verification is the second item. So we've been working on that and trying to figure out how, how we're going to check, verify, understand, you know, that, you know, there's kind of the, the proverbial smell test. You have to run out all these numbers, and somebody needs to look through a percentage of them, make sure that they look consistent, that they look accurate. We're going to define some test scripts with the election staff to determine how successful we are in the, the transition. So we have to come up with what's our measure of success in converting the data. And I think it's going to be fairly high that we, we have some pretty high standards because of the election. So we're going to be reviewing, verifying lots of information. We are testing all of this right now with the current scripts and with the current work that's being done in preparation for the final product. Our database administrators are working on that now. So we'll have a test run. They're doing it today. Most likely, we'll have a couple of examples of how we can do this process. And that, that's in anticipation of getting the final product after the board approves it. We'll have tested the import of the data a couple of times hopefully by then. Keep in mind, all the testing, all the work in this is being done in a development environment. So we're not affecting the elections data in any way, shape, or form right now. I just want that to be perfectly clear. Nothing's being changed. The board hasn't approved anything. We're doing this all in test environments. So the, the good thing is that it's all a copy of production. So it's a copy of the exact stuff that Jack's using, and we use that to test with. So.
Roger, what is DFM? What is DFM?
DFM is an acronym, I believe, or initials for the company that does our voter registration software.
Okay, thanks.
The company, if you look it up online, it's DFM Associates. And they're out of California. They do five of the largest election jurisdictions and counties in Illinois, and they also do of the largest election jurisdictions in California, and I think they're in a couple other states. So.
Thank you.
The, the product is EIMS, if you're out there looking at it. It's Election Information Management Systems.
Thank you.
Yep. And just a plug, we, we actually really like working with them. They, they've been a big help. So, yeah.
I, I would agree. I thought the initial conversation, they were highly professional, organized. They knew exactly what was needed. And there was no peripheral conversation. It was to the point. Let's get it done, and this is how we're going to manage and work it.
So we have the scripts from them. We're working with them now to, to figure that out, the process and the verification, quality control validation. Now, that's just taking the product that is, is generated and bringing it from one system to the other. And there's the things that happen as a result of this decision to go forward, which I think are important to understand. There's a lot of things that happen after the board approves of the maps, and that's, a lot of that has to do with, you know, partisan politics. It has to do with candidates, voters, elections department or elections office in the county clerk. But you will have some significant changes to precincts. You're going to have precinct committee men existing and new that have to be dealt with. The, obviously, the political parties educating the voting public, the candidates. People will be coming in wanting to get walk lists and maps. They'll want to get, you know, vote, voter lists. A lot of that, we're, we're going to need some, some time between the time the board officially adopts any precincts or any changes to the time when the information's publicly available. The other part of that is we have countless numbers of places where we have to update that on the clerk's website, on their documentation, on their internal procedures. All of that has to take place as well, so their staff can actually provide the correct information to a person that walks in after the, you know, January 14th and says, I want this from the elections authority. So that, that's a whole different issue. And I think it's important, you know, you have, you also have, you know, between voter education, election judges, election workers. I think the good news is that if the precinct numbers are marginally the same, that's good news for election judges and workers and the volunteers. I think that's a, that's a great position to be in because we were afraid we were going to have a lot more precincts. So that's good. Election equipment and supplies. If we're at the same number of precincts, similar number of vote centers, I think that helps us in that category as well. So those are becoming a little bit less concerned. I do think that some of that education, outreach, voter cards, those are questions that the county clerk's office is considering and how that, that would take place. We have Brian Pollock here from the clerk's office. And I don't know if Brian, you know, if this is a proper time, Mr. Chairman, if Brian had something he'd like to contribute or- Okay. You want to say? You done? You want to say? You done?
No, no, give more.
No, I think at this point, if you have a, anything you'd like to add to that part.
I mean, thank you, Roger.
Copey, please, before we move on, Copey, please.
Go ahead, Mr. Copey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you just explained many facets of the process that are not in place because there's a lack of the final information. And, but yet, we're going to decide to approve something for Tuesday, which brings me back to the original axiom of argument regarding the slide one and slide two. It sounds to me, and I'm going to maintain this posture, that we need to, we need, we need to buy some time. And the question has not been answered, what the real timeframe is for slide two.
Actually, actually, Mr. Copey, I, I think what you'll find is that on, on Tuesday, this committee will be asked to approve the maps and forward it to a special board meeting, which I believe will be scheduled next Friday, at which time we have to approve the maps for the new precincts. Then it has to be implemented into the election system. And parts of that will take a little bit of time, but if Mr. Pollock would expand upon that now, Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One thing first, the, the work that's gone on in this from Roger's team and GIS and elections and everything has been incredible. So I, I, that's, it's been a Herculean task, and I, I've been in the room, tried not to mess things up. And, I mean, they've done an incredible job in, in the short timeframe that's there. So whatever happens, they're professionals, and it's been great. That said, yes, there are, the concerns that we have are, as Roger mentioned, will be the downstream things. The, the concerns about implementing that data. Ultimately, the, the precincts are a county board function. So whatever the county board does, we deal with. But in terms of implementing it, with as much help as we're getting from DFM and, and hopefully everything goes smoothly, that's going to determine how much time things take to get in play. The big concerns we have is because of this compressed primary schedule. Normally, candidates have 90 days to collect signatures. It's 60. And most candidates want to file the first day, so it's really seven and a half weeks. So any delays in getting that data to candidates is taking time off that clock, and those days will go fast. And that's, and when people want that data, they're, they're coming to our office, not here. So the torches and the pitchforks are coming over there. And the, the concerns that we have is we know that candidates are already planning walking this weekend, or I'm sorry, next weekend, after petitions go out, and we won't have that data. And we don't know how long it's going to take to do it, if it's not having to be manually entered, hopefully. You know, we're not talking thousands of hours and months. We're talking a shorter timeframe. But that's, that's the real concern is what impact that has. Obviously, the impact, the, the political impact of PCs that are moved and precincts that are moved. This process has not been political. I mean, it's, it's looking at implementing the law and following it. That's, I think you could agree with that, Mr. Chair. Anyone that's been in there has seen the way that's worked.
Yeah, if, Roger, if you'd go on to the next slide.
Sure. But it's really, it's, it's getting this stuff done, and that's, that's going to be the problem. And the other issues are, what are the implications of those issues? You know, are, are candidates that if, if the data is not available, I mean, is that going to lead to more petition challenges? Is that going to lead to more election contests? You know, we're, we're, we're trying to, that, that's where the timeframe comes in. I mean, I don't want to go through all the doomsday stuff now, but I mean, we can talk about that, you know, offline. But there, there are, there are concerns. It's not about doing it. It's about how it gets done and when it gets done, not that it has to be done.
As, as, you know, Mr. Copey in, involved in his question and, and Mr. Pollock involved in part of his description, the real challenge is that getting signatures on petitions begins on January 13. And we're not going to actually approve the actual precincts until probably January 14. So there is going to be a completely new precinct list in, in every township in the county. They will have different boundaries. And we know that's going to create an issue. But we truly felt it was best to get this done now and to try to do it in a, a very correct manner. And although it, it can be said that it's being done too fast, I will tell you that it's being done very well, as, as Brian said. Everybody who's been working on this has just done, just done a phenomenal job. So our objective is that we can perhaps get this data into the system. So perhaps the County Clerk could have walk data available by January 18 or January 19. That would be probably an early date, but it would probably be achievable.
I think, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pollock, do you agree with that? Yeah, well, Roger.
So, Mr. Chairman, yeah, this is Roger Fonstock again. The, the, probably the 14th, depending on the time of the meeting, we would get the approval. We would, we have to do like a, a code freeze or a data entry freeze with the Elections Department for the Secretary of State Voter Registration. That might take a day or two to get them to stop importing voter registration to us from the state system, because when, when we code the voters, we have, we have to pause and we'll export, take it to GIS, code everybody, bring them back in. And then we have to turn all those systems back on to update. We don't want to do that until we verify that what we've done is successful and, and everything comes out with the, the validation test. So I'm guessing that the week of the 17th, we will be doing all of that work, that we would be doing the export-import, the code freeze for the, the data. All of that would start happening. And we have to talk to the, the state IVRS, which is the Illinois Voter Registration System. They're usually responsive within days. But you're probably dealing with lots of other jurisdictions that are going to be asking them to do similar things. And it's not uncommon for that to take, take a little bit of time. But we have to do that, or else we'll have voter registration coming in while we're changing things. And they won't get updated. We have to have this carnal knowledge of every person that was added so we can recode them manually at that point, which we do get a list. We do have a list of who's coming in. I will tell you that right now with voter registration drives, sometimes that's 1,000 people in a day. So now, take in mind, we don't go up in voter population that quickly because people go off the rolls at similar pace. So it's kind of add and subtract. And but that's also all a part of the IVRS that was put in place under HAVA. So we have to sync up with the state. So the week of the 17th would be import-export week. We'll call it that. Validation would start, I'm hoping by the end of the week, we would validate. And sometime during the week of the 24th, I think you would get the ability to walk into the Clerk's Office and use the voter registration system to generate like a walk list or, or a precinct list. That's, that's optimistic. So the week of the 24th is probably optimistic. If I had to be pessimistic, I would, I would roll into February. I'm optimistic. So I think everything's been going very well. DFM's worked very well with us. There are some things that would prevent us, you know, from having it probably 17th, 18th, or 19th. I, I just see those gears clicking with, hey, contact the state, put the freeze in. They tell us, okay, we'll have it stopped tonight at midnight. You know, okay, the 18th, we get the go-ahead. One of the first things that we do when we do this, just, just for general knowledge, is we will take a scripted approach, and we'll stop everything, and we back everything up to preserve everything before we start. We have to spend hours making sure that we have a actual copy of everything that's reproducible before we start. And that's because if something's not going right, we got to go back and start over. We want a good, solid, you know, place to return to. So we'll be doing all that work that first couple of days, and then we'll start the export and import. So it's, it's very calculated. The one thing that's good is the people then, that are doing this have 20-plus years' experience doing it. They're very good at it. They know what they're doing. We've moved millions of records around for court and other places. So this is, you know, 300,000 voter records. It's manageable. You can almost read them all in a couple of days. So if you're really bored.
Go ahead.
Okay, so these were the dates, and I think, Mr. Tupp, Chairman, you explained those, primary voting. And then we continue to precinct restructuring. And this goes back to the, the original kind of plan, part one and part two. So precinct, you know, an average or should have 1,200. Again, you know, we have at least 28 with over 2,000 to date. I know all of those have been addressed, Chairman Tupp. Those are all done. And we're down below that. We're down to that 1,200 mark. There's a few that are hovering around 1,200. I think the question there about practicable is if it's at 1,201, do you split it to 2,600 and 601? And that's where we're saying, you know, that might not be practicable at this point. Maybe next year we'll split one of those if they're too large. And again, you know, the requirements. One of the things that, you know, we have talked about is, is wards. And we're working on some of that as well. Some of the ward maps are not going to be done for the city of Aurora till next summer. So we'll have to address the wards as well. Brian has been in contact. I know there's been some contacts with the cities that have wards. And we're talking to them about their, their ward maps. It would be ideal if the wards use the precinct boundaries, and we, you know, we don't have to do much alignment when they create their wards. Obviously, that's something the city decides what they want for aldermanic wards. We don't have wards in every city, so we only have, I think, four or five cities that have wards. But that's kind of out there, I would say, next year for us to deal with. But at this point, this precinct restructuring is, is substantially done, which is now substantially done on our part. Obviously, the committee and the county board will soon be getting copies of this. Mr. Tuppie mentioned the maps. We're going to be generating a township precinct set of maps. The idea is that the township precinct set of maps and a county-wide map of precincts would be available as an exhibit to the ordinance that would adopt the new precincts. So you'll see those as soon as we have them available. My understanding is that the maps that we're going to generate, they will start generating those this afternoon. So we're going to start generating those. We think we'll have the electronic versions and printed versions by the end of Monday. That's our goal, and they'll be ready for distribution and on the special Public Service Committee meeting next week for your consideration with the ordinance. The current work schedule, this is laid out. I think we've talked about most of these dates. The key dates is January 11th at this point. That's this special Public Service Committee meeting, getting together to look at the maps and the ordinance. We'll have, obviously, state's attorneys drafting the ordinance. They'll be here to give us advice about that. But the exhibit would be the maps. And then ultimately, pending approval of this Special Public Service Committee, it would be moved to a special county board meeting on the 14th as a non-consent, obviously, item for consideration of the board. So some of the statistics again.
Yeah, that I, let me, the key, key statistic, let me kind of update you on what numbers I was given this morning is as of today, we have 291 precincts. As of the redraw, I think they have 295. Okay? All of the precincts have been split, that need to be split. And many of the ones that were smaller have been combined, in particular where we had, you know, two adjacent precincts, and they fell within the boundaries. If they stayed under the 1,200 voter, voter rule, we just combined. So I know some of that work is going to create challenges from a political basis for those people that are in charge of, of getting precinct committeemen and things of that nature. And I, I know there will be some, some criticism of that. But all of this was done with absolutely no political agenda, just getting it done and getting them combined.
So the, the, these were identified also as just some of the major challenges. You got the, the redraw that are being done by the 10th to get it in time for the 11th. We, we do have a placeholder on the agendas for the ordinance. We are working on the exhibit. That's our challenge, getting those maps for the exhibit.
And I'm sure, we're, we're sure the state's attorney will have the ordinance complete and ready to go.
I believe it's, it's, it's drafted. They're waiting for our exhibit. Yeah. They'll tell us they're waiting for the exhibit. We tell them we're waiting for the ordinance.
The ordinance should take five minutes.
Yeah. They, they just want us to give them, you know, what they're describing in the exhibit. So I, I appreciate that. You know, the, the coding and accuracy, I think verification is, is probably our, our critical path right now. Critical path, meaning the most, most important, difficult task that would change your timeline to when you're done. And, and that's simply, we need to test, verify the scripts. We're working on that now. I have a lot of confidence in the people that are doing it. If, if something is not working exactly as we expect, I think it's a matter of days getting it addressed. It's not, you know, this endless process. So I, that's why I'm saying, within the two weeks after the 14th, I think we'll have substantially be done with voter registration. Then obviously, you have the, the task of updating all the content information and telling everybody that it's available and how it's available and, and where they can get the information. We have a, we need a campaign of, of outreach that, that would tell all the appropriate people what's been changed. Obviously, this is going to have some effects on, on, you know, how we create ballots. But that's, that, some of that's automated from voter registration system. We bring files over to create the ballots. I think that some of this alignment will actually reduce the number of ballot styles that we have considerably, which will also clean up, you know, the, the 500 and some ballot styles that we have to generate for each party during a primary. So, you know, progress to date, these are just some of the milestones. You'll see like the last, like the fifth, sixth, seventh, we've been working feverishly. This is just some of the details of what was being done on those dates. And you'll see the future events that Mr. Chairman put up there, the, the 11th and 14th. Those are our big dates right now. And again, I think we'll have the Exhibit A substantially done on the 10th. Hopefully, we can get that out electronically in advance of the meeting. And then this is just some of the people. So, so to give me an idea of who all's been working on this, and this doesn't include everybody. I know there's, Madam Chairman's been involved. Mr. Chairman Tupp, I don't think you put yourself on there. He's been leading the show. Congratulations to, to him. I think he's been, you know, able to come and meet with us on a daily basis, a lot of time. And I, I appreciate, you know, his willingness to come in and, and lead and take the initiative to work on this with us. It's helped us.
I, I know, I know some of these names are, are familiar to you. Some of them may not be. But I really want to point out the involvement of three particular people that are on this list. The work that has been put in by Raymond Esquivel, Tom Nikoski, and Nick Kruger, particularly Nick, okay, has been exemplary. These three people have worked diligently, worked together in order to make this happen. And, and I just cannot be more complimentary of these three people. So.
And this, this is Roger again. I would add that those three people have probably been doing this for 20 years. Yeah.
Okay, yes, Ms. Bates.
I have two questions. So if we approve this on January 11th, I've been trying to get my notes straight here. Then does that, does that give the board members enough time to review these precincts? Is there, is there a review process that the board members are going to need to look at all of these and understand them, or?
The board isn't going to be asked to approve this on the 11th. The committee is.
Okay, committee.
So the committee will approve it on the eleventh and move it on to the board, and then the board will be doing it on the fourteenth.
Okay, so we think that's we think that's enough time for everybody to understand this. I'm just thinking.
No, no, but that's the time we have.
Okay.
Mr. Leonard.
No, I have a I have two questions, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Bates.
So just to clarify what Roger said, so the lists to the voter list might not be available till February?
That's Mr. Feinstein's. Pessimistic.
I I think, you know, within two weeks, we would have the voter registration system up and running, and we would be finishing validation. You know, there there, you know, I'm saying that optimistically, that if everything goes the way we had planned, we would be done in two weeks with the data part of it. It'll be available in the clerk's office. Now, we have to have some validation processes for the clerk after that that they would do. And, you know, they would determine when they would release that information, or they would agree that, you know, it's it's in a format that they can, you know, trust that it's available. So I I'm saying two weeks for our part of it, and then we would say it's available to the clerk.
What is your most practicable date?
So to me, we would be done in two weeks and
Two weeks from when?
From the fourteenth.
So about the twenty-eighth? Of January.
I think that that will be done, yes, before that, but that's probably the end date. Yes, then, you know, you still have the clerk's processes. If the clerk, you know, gets it on the the week of the twenty-fourth, by the end of the twenty-eighth, you know, and they look at it, they they, you know, for them to digest everything that's happened and to understand and appreciate that we're we're done looking at it. We we, you know, that's why I was saying there's some things that I can't speak for. We we have to, I have to understand what the clerk's expectations are, and and if there's any concerns they have, we'd have to remedy those. So we won't be at that point until that week of the twenty-fourth. I'm just, that's where I'm at, and by the twenty-eighth, we'll be there.
Okay, so petitions are going to start on the thirteenth officially, but the list won't be available till maybe the twenty-eighth, so that's going to be tough, right?
That's probably reasonable.
I and and the to me, the biggest thing that will be affected is the individual precincts and the people that want to run for precinct committeemen. And the key thing that I would offer in in some way of what will be available is that the maps will be available, so we will know the boundary lines of those precincts. And the precinct committeemen, I believe, only have to get eight or ten signatures in order to be on the ballot. Seven, seven signatures in order to be on the ballot. So although I think this is all very inconvenient, I I think it is all very manageable, but that's open to interpretation, I'm sure.
So will the list be available for Congress and states, state reps and board members, et cetera?
They have that same challenge also.
So it's not just precinct commitment, it's everybody.
Well, I understand that, but the biggest change in Kane County will be the precincts, because, believe me, many of the precinct lines have been redrawn. I I can share with you that in Rutland Township, for example, that that was completely redrawn. Now, it needed to be redrawn because of the population explosion explosion in that area. And and it's been done with a very conservative, a very serious effort, okay?
I mean, there there were some alignments where you're taking empty lots and putting them into a precinct to make them align with a board district, so that counts as a an alignment. There was one section, I believe, State's Attorney Moser said she'd claimed that part. It was an overpass. I told her she could probably walk that district.
So so will voter list be ready for our congressman for?
But I think that you're, you know, you're you're dealing with, one is the jurisdictional boundaries are established. They know where those boundaries are. Now, the automation of generating the walk lists, they get their data from, you know, different sources. You know, they they may be getting voter registration from the state, probably, you know, if it's state party. They get voter information from the counties as well, or election authority, so and they also get it from private sources. So I don't know where they get their data necessarily, but I can say that we probably won't be doing exports of the county voter registration data or the walk lists or other, you know, printed forms that first two weeks. I I just see that as as very difficult to get through all the validation in those two weeks. I mean, we'll be working as fast as we can, but the the some of those processes, like I said, you have to do the code freeze, you have to do all the backups. We have to make sure we have all of our scripts in order. We run through it. We we get to the point where we're validating and running some exception reports. We look at it. We turn it over to the clerk, let them look at it. They have to verify what percentage of records they want to look at. They start running some sample reports out of it to make sure that, you know, like I said before, it passes the smell test. You're looking at certain, and and we've even talked about how much do you have to verify before you're comfortable with it? And that's up to them. I I can't judge that for them. They have to tell us that they think it's accurate. So that I I, you know, I'm just saying, I think those two weeks will be very busy and we'll be finishing it up. You do know the jurisdictional boundaries of where your race is being, you know, contested or or where it's being held, so I think that's an advantage. You could get voter registration data for the voter registration system for the existing precincts and the existing districts all the way up until we do the code freeze.
Good.
So.
That will be that will be, I'm sorry to interrupt you, that'll be announced broadly so that everyone knows it'll be a stop and then go.
Yeah, there'll be a period of time where we have to kind of, it'll it'll just be stopping the update of the voter registration. It won't stop the clerk's office from running the old lists.
Okay.
So if you said you wanted to get countywide, you know, voter registration list for all Republicans or all Democrats with, you know, the information that they provide, they they could still run the reports. It just won't have the new precincts. It won't have the, you know, some of the new boundaries, and and you'll get voter data with, I think you guys provide address information, voter data. You can still get that. Now, you'd have to be able to understand that that voter data is the voter that you're asking to sign your petition within your jurisdiction, within your district. We we won't have, you know, those that that degree of information quite yet.
Mr. Leonard, I know you've been very patient.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I I just wanted to point out that Ms. Bates had asked about the timeframe on this. At the January eleventh county board meeting, we will have information for discussion. But actually, the public service committee meeting will be after that county board meeting, where we will decide to move forward on what has been proposed at the January fourteenth special board meeting. Is that correct?
January, yeah, January fourteenth special board, yes.
So, you know, I think, yeah, is it ideal? Do we have all the time in the world to study it? No. But I'm not the sharpest stick in the box, but if you give me three days to study something, I can come up with a pretty good idea of whether I like it or not. So I think it's it's reasonable. The other point I wanted to make was with respect to candidates running, whether it be precinct committeemen or board members or whoever, the the number of signatures that are going to need or that are going to be needed for your petition, you know, as an example, the precinct people are seven, and say, the county board people average fifty. We know areas in our territory that won't be affected near our homes where we could get those signatures. So I don't think that's as critical a concern as people think. I think it's, we can handle that and work around it.
Actually, Mr. Leonard, county board is maximum of fifteen required.
Fifteen, excellent.
I believe that.
I say maximum because that's Republicans. Democrats only have to get eleven.
The state, the state board candidate guide says twenty-four. I stand corrected.
Just, Madam Chair. I'd like to comment on one of your comments, Ms. Bates, regarding the congressional candidates and the state legislative candidates. They have separate databases that they work with as well that are privately managed and operated by both of the mutual parties. Once the maps are put into place, they will take their data, they will put it into those maps, and that will be something that the state and congressional candidates will be using to draw their lists from. So why it's very important that the county is as accurate as possible for all the right reasons, which we just talked about. These congressional and state candidates walk sometimes large districts that'll be multi-municipal, multi-county throughout. So their impact that is on Kane for congressional districts is going to be impactful, but not as specific as, let's say, a county board person who will have their map and go walk on your neighbor's doors and and reintroduce yourself in the cold weather.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bates, did you want to say something?
Um, actually, I think I've answered my question. Thank you, Madam.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other questions?
Kope, please.
But before we adjourn, I want to make it very, very clear that if any.
Mr. Kope had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kope, go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, the timeframe is is a crunch. The 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 idea that all of this effort has been taken place by staff and hired contractors without the input of the committee or the board. Uh, I I'm a little bit, I I I maintain a a miffed attitude about that. Specifically, when one of Mr. Shepro's first meetings, when he was elected commissioner two years ago, he said, we need to start working on the precinct splits and divisions. It's imperative, and I've brought this up several times. I think the first time was three years ago. And and yes, we can, we can talk about, oh, you know, change of rules, change of rules. But that could have been a portion to the ongoing dialogue. But now we're forced to accept maps that were generated by by essentially the bureaucracy without the due process of peer review through the committee. Can I can I maintain, Mr. Leonard, uh, idea that, yes, give me some time, we'll look at it. But suppose that there is a challenge to the maps on that day. Will there be time to deliberate those challenges? Uh, with this progressive push that is in place, I doubt it very seriously. So we may be able to tweak a few votes here, a few votes there on one or two precincts. But overall, the process has been has, I don't believe that, I do not believe that this is what the the voters, the voting public or my district, being the representative of the people in my district, had anticipated or expects. But if if there is a reasonable consensus, I am willing to concede, but it needs to be, it needs to be, it needs to be very it needs to be, it it needs to be the best. It's got to be the best. But thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Um, Louis, permission to speak?
Yes, Ms. Lewis.
Thank you. First of all, I do want to thank Roger and Raymond and Brian and everybody that has worked so hard on this. I do understand, probably not to the full extent, but I I but I know from watching the hours that were put in when we did our mapping for our county boards, and this is certainly a much bigger project, so I do appreciate all the efforts put in. However, along with what Mr. Kope said, in the issue of transparency, come next fall or this time next year, when people are coming before this committee saying that we don't believe that there was election integrity, and we believe that there was ballot harvesting done by the committeemen and blah, 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 because this committee, with the exception of our chairman, were not involved in any of this. I don't think that, you know, myself personally, I'm not going to be able to say, oh, beyond a shadow of a doubt. I think everything was done right because I just don't have that comfort. So I just want to go on record as saying that's just a comment. Um, nothing more. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm at Shepro.
Mr. Shepro.
At the outset, I think one of the slides said something like, he was determined that this committee should oversee the process. And to Mrs. Lewis's point, that I, Mr. Kope's point, as far as I can tell, no member of this committee has been asked to participate in any of these meetings or discussions. The committee has not been asked to make any decisions, to give any guidance, or to be in any way involved in that. It has been solely the chairman of the committee who has decided to do that. And if if I'm wrong, if anybody on this committee has been involved in the process, I I hope they would speak up now and tell us the extent of that. I I don't see that, I mean, it's frankly a farce to suggest that this committee has had any role or involvement in this at all. And to the other points that were being made, I would question if at the final meeting, if anybody says, well, I'd like to redraw the map for, you know, Elgin seventy-two, if that's even going to be feasible. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepro. Madam Chair.
I'd like to ask our state's attorney a question, if I may. Is there any guidance written down either by the state or through our county code, which describes this process of precinct redraw?
None that I'm aware of.
Is there any, perhaps, Brian, since you're very familiar with this process? And some of us, this is obviously new, decennial, and it hasn't happened here for some time. Is there any best practices that are in place, that have been put in place by other counties, other states, municipalities, that you can draw on to give us an example to show that we are following best practices?
You know, the statute says the county board shall do it, and it's up to the county board, and basically, each county has its own, you know, process.
Methodology. So I'm I'm just thinking down the line here. If we were to follow the suggestions of Mr. Kope and Ms. Lewis, what would probably need to happen is as we dispense it down to our two hundred ninety-one, and I know there's not precinct committee people in each one, nor is there a Democrat or Republican precinct committee person in each one of the precincts, but certainly to the townships. Each one of the townships and after the process, which we have to do, of redrawing congressional county and legislative maps to make sure that they're all together, that we have to do, that is required by law by the fourteenth. As far as the precincts go, we'd have to ask for conveyance of each one of the Republican members and the Democratic members of each one of the townships, get their input for the redraw, then bring that up to the county at a series of meetings to have that approved and then float it in to the map that Roger is doing. That would be the buy-in process that would take probably over a year to accomplish to get all of the input that we went through with the very thoroughness of drawing the county maps.
I'm at Shepro.
Mr. Shepro.
Lake County, as I understand it from talking to several people involved in our process, ended up with probably twice our number of precincts. They apparently ended up making fifteen new ones. DuPage County has annually divided. DuPage County has annually divided precincts. So, the question is, the best practice? I think the best practice would have been not to wait 10 years to do any meaningful division. And as Mr. Kope pointed out, this is not something that has just been brought up. And as I understand, the interpretation is that the statutes always said, the county board shall divide, the word shall. And it was alluded to, I think, at the, at its regular meeting in June. That hasn't been done. Now, it says it shall be done within 60 days. The only change that I see is that we've gone from saying it shall be done on one schedule and now it's saying we shall be done on 60 days. I'm not sure why one shall is stronger than the other shall. I am very concerned about the process, about the fact that if it's determined by whatever alchemy that this committee is supposed to oversee it, this committee has had no role at all in the process. And I would move at this point that we adjourn.
Hold on a moment, is there anybody else who wants to make a comment? Other than the chair? Okay, I want to make it very clear and that I have personally contacted every member of this committee prior to this meeting. And I was able to get through to, I believe, all but one. I am readily available to discuss any matter with anybody that wants to give me a call. This is a process that is very time sensitive and it's trying to be, trying to be done with a tremendous amount of, of accuracy. And I'm extremely impressed with the members of our staff that have really put forth this effort.
Nothing I've said should be taken as any.
I would be happy to accept a motion for adjournment.
Kope, old business?
Yes, Mr. Kope?
Thank you. At the last special meeting for this committee, there was a situation that was alluded to, that there's a change in information that would have confused the committee and that it was imperative to move this meeting forward to this date. And yet, that question of, and that information of why that had taken place and what has changed between then and now is worthy of discussion. And I, I, I've been waiting patiently for a reasonable explanation. Thank you.
I will be happy to discuss that with you personally, Mr. Kope, if you'd give me a call. Okay. I will be happy to entertain a motion for adjournment. Nobody wants to adjourn?
Come on, I want to stay.
Okay, ask a question.
No questions, sir, you've done a great job, thank you.
Round of seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Very much.